We'll call the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Clerk, please call overall.
Councilmember Rissman?
Present.
Councilmember Mackin?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Knack?
Here.
Councilmember Houts?
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Pesco?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Here.
And Mayor Crank?
I'm here. Uh, everyone is accounted for. We have a spot on our agenda for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now or at the end of the meeting. Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. Items we consider be to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless someone up here or the audience wishes something removed for clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda, we've got our minutes of September twenty-second, our DDA minutes of August twenty-seventh, Library Advisory Board minutes of August fourth, Planning Commission minutes of July twenty-first, our Construction Board of Appeal Special minutes of August eighteenth, BPU minutes of September third, South Central Power Agency minutes of August seventh, our BPU financial statements for August of twenty-five, City of Coldwater financial reports for August of twenty-five, and a memo for me regarding some board appointment reappointments. Anybody in the audience wish anything removed? Anybody up here? Then?
Motion.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. We have motion and we have support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Consent agenda approved. Bills and accounts, uh, two hundred thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, Tom is here. If there's any questions, Paul's hiding back there behind Robert. Questions, motion, pleasure?
Move. Pay the bills.
Good choice, John.
Support.
Thanks, Chad. We have motion and we have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Number twelve, City Manager report. Keith?
Thank you, Attorney Counsel. Good evening, everyone. Uh, first, our biannual, uh, November election for, uh, council member and mayor, uh, will be taking place next month on November, uh, fourth, and that will take place from seven AM to eight PM. Uh, of course, the mayor position and the four council members are all running unopposed, uh, but we do have an election and, uh, absentee ballots are available. And any questions related to the election can be directed to, uh, City Clerk Shana Chavez. Secondly, uh, you'll see around City Hall, particularly on Fridays, uh, many of the staff will be wearing pink, and that's in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and both city and BPU staff participate in that through lapel pins and pink shirts and pink hard hats through the month of October. The month of October is also the Fire Prevention Month, and so this is our annual reminder and opportunity to remind you of replacing your batteries, checking your smoke detectors, servicing your home heating systems, uh, prior to the onset of, uh, really cold weather that we've been very fortunate over the last few weeks and months, uh, with, uh, with the continuation of summer essentially. And so, but we advise also during the course of October in National Fire Prevention Month is to recognize and thank our city firefighting staff for all that they do throughout the year. Some other fall reminders. In spite of the nice weather, uh, we did complete our s- our bulk brush pickup for the first week of October last week. And so our last, our next and last bulk brush pick- uh, pickup will be, uh, the first week, first Monday of November, Monday, November third. So we ask our residents to get their, uh, last brush piles out that weekend prior to, uh, November third, uh, there again, just after Halloween that weekend. Uh, we will continue to pick up yard waste bags on Mondays, uh, weather permitting, uh, through the end of the month. And, um, we're just a reminder that, uh, you cannot burn brush or leaves. Uh, burning is not permitted in the city limits, and, um, campfires obviously are permitted, uh, but yard waste, the burning of yard waste is not. And lastly, if those opportunities, whether it's bags or brush pickup, aren't available, or you have more that you're generating, uh, you can always drop those off at the city's, uh, compost site on forty-five Industrial Ave, and we have our new fencing. Uh, we have, uh, video camera surveillance, and, uh, the gates are operated, uh, by photoelectric. And so that's available from essentially dusk to dawn, uh, to drop off seven days a week, and that's available to city and Coldwater Township residents. Uh, some projects, want to update you on relative to work around the community. Uh, North Clay Street continues, uh, they're about a week from, uh, paving yeah, as well as the South Clay, Elizabeth and West Clark Streets. You've seen, uh, work begin on those, and that will encompass some curb repairs, milling and paving as well. Um, South Sprague is gonna have a number of manhole adjustments and utility box repairs, and then Stock River Drive is scheduled for milling and repaving, uh, the week of November third. So we would just ask motorists to, as they're traversing those areas, to, uh, be cautious through construction zones or avoid them altogether if they can. And then some Halloween updates as we're only a couple of weeks away from Halloween. Uh, the city's, uh, trick-or-treating recommended time is, they're again on Friday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty PM to seven PM. And we just ask everyone to take, uh, caution when, uh, driving through the community and the neighborhoods on that night specifically. Uh, I know that that's also now going to be a high school football night, so it'll be a busy time in the community. And then the parade is the, uh, Saturday before that, Saturday, October twenty-fifth at seven-thirty. Uh, that will be downtown. And that always generates a large crowd, and it's become more popular every year. And so, uh, the parade will be taking place. That kicks off on Hudson Street and runs down US twelve to Clay. And then another, uh, Halloween-related, uh, notice is that with the work that's now underway at Rotary Park, uh, Rotary Park is, uh, closed down, and, um, Haunted Forest will, will not take place this year. And just to, um, to make people aware of that, but it'll come back, uh, stronger than ever next year. Uh, but with work underway there, that's why it was on the calendar as we anticipated it last year. Uh, but with work now having begun, um, the city's now hosting Haunted Forest this year. So with that, that's, uh, my update for this evening.
Okay, thanks Keith. Uh, questions for Keith? Comments? Hey, seeing none, we'll move to thirteen, a present- a presentation by Paul Jacob Jack regarding the Low Income Energy Assistance Fund. Paul?
Your presentation starts on page seventy-three. We wanna use the clicker. Okay, you just start talking and I'll do it.
It's now working. Hang on, I see IT running.
He did have it working before the meeting.
And he did turn it off, but I turned it back on.
There he is.
Did this one? Oh, that's the, uh... That's fine, okay. Well, thank you, Mayor, uh, members of council. So I'm here to do a, a two-part presentation. The first is to go over some of the changes, um, that the state of Michigan had put together regarding low income assistance, uh, throughout the year. Uh, one of the things that they actually did in twenty-twenty-five, next slide, please. In twenty-twenty-five, they made some significant changes to the way that they handle low income, uh, assistance for what they call Michigan Energy Assistance Program. Uh, what they did is they are increasing and changing the way that they do their per meter fee. Uh, historically, CBPU has opted out of this because we felt the fee that would be charged to all of our customers was higher than what we actually would be getting back in a benefit to our customers. Didn't want to increase their rates to see that moving forward. So what they did is they changed that. They also changed who can opt out. They changed that level down to forty-five thousand customers and less. If you have forty-five thousand or less, you can opt out of the program, the state program itself. The only thing is that you also have to know that you are now op- opting out of the state's assistance program, the, the Michigan Energy Assistance Program, which means you cannot get gar- garner any of the state money that the state will be collecting. Uh, additionally, they also changed the way that they configure who's eligible for this. It used to be a hundred fifty percent of the federal poverty level, and now they've changed that to be more local of sixty percent of what the average state median income would be. Next slide, please. So if an, if a utility opted in to this program, they would basically have to charge their customers or come up with what the state recommended amount would be. Currently, for this year, it's a dollar twenty-five per meter per month, which would come out to be a little over a hundred twelve thousand dollars that CBPU would either have to charge its customers or pull out of its coffers to be able to fund this. The other thing that this does is it does not stay in the community. Uh, this funds, this amount of money would go to a pot of money that the state would manage. So we don't know if all this money would stay here locally in Branch County, would go to Detroit, would go to Lansing. They don't know. They don't have any way to track it, even though that they say they will try to keep it local. They would not be able to track that for that. Uh, historically, just in case you were wondering, historically, we have used energy assistance roughly thirty to forty thousand dollars per year is what we are showing is the assistance that was paid back to the utility itself. Next slide, please. So if you opt out, one of the things we would have to show is that we have this money available in our budget with a line item that we've already put in there. Uh, the other thing that this does is it allows for gas customers that are electric customers, a CBPU, to be eligible for these funds. Trust me, it's a big, long story of why that was put in there, and we tried to get it out, but they left it in there. So now electric utilities are also assisting a deliverable gas or deliverable heater- heating fuels fund. So that's something that we would have to do. Uh, what we're planning on doing is utilizing Jacobs Well Ministries, which is someone we currently use for the program itself. Uh, they would basically be the ones who would handle the prequalifications, uh, the max limits that everyone would be set up to be able to receive, and all we would have to do is make sure that we've got an email from them stating that we do approve this customer for this amount. We put that on their account, pull it out of the fund balance in that, that account, and then move forward from there. The other thing, of course, it's a state program, so there's a lot of tracking that is necessary for that. In June of this year, which we have done in the past, the CBPU board has gone ahead and opted out of this program as well, too. Part of what we're doing tonight is explaining what we're gonna be doing differently as we have to do some customer education moving forward. Next slide. So some of the things that they work on, that they looked at, is assessed by income level. They base that on house sizes. There's a couple of slides here that'll show you how that changes. Uh, crisis, you have to show a past due for your electric or for your heating bills. Uh, the biggest thing that, that will have to happen is they have to be an electric customer of the BPU. Uh, an electric customer of the local investor-owned, or any of the other utilities would not be able to garner any of the funds that we would have through that put forward for, uh, Jacobs Well. The other thing, though, is that these customers would also be eligible for SER or State Energy Relief Funds, which are separate than the LIHEF or the MEAP funds that the state is collecting. Next slide. So some of the things that we do, as we've talked about already, is as partnering with Jacobs Well Ministry, uh, they will make sure that any customer that gets submitted to them is an electric customer of ours. Some of the other things that they will look at, as well as them and DHHS, is the state wants to make sure that we're protecting our vulnerable population, which includes children under five, individuals with a disability, individuals over sixty, and anyone who has experienced homelessness over the past twelve months. So this chart here is the new chart that the state mandated going through regarding assistance funds. So if you just take, for example, a household size of two, at the hundred fifty percent poverty level, you're looking at thirty thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. With the new state funding, you're looking at forty-two thousand oh sixty-five. So they're able to catch a, a larger margin of those that aren't able to pay their, their bills. Next slide, please. So one of the things with partnering with Jacobs Well, the way that this will work, this is a lot of wording on here. We will, if a customer comes in, and we'll make sure we're gonna continue to do a lot of advertising, social media, we're gonna put it in our bill inserts and make sure our customers are aware of it. It will be part of two-on-one. So if a customer is unable to pay their bills and they face disconnect, they will be able to go to, we will send them to DHHS. DHHS will qualify them, see if they're available for any type of SER funding. If they've got all the SER funded and they still have an outstanding bill, and they're an electric customer of the BPU, which is the key, they will be submitted to Jacobs Ministry, Jacobs Well. Jacobs Well will therefore look at the customer, make sure that they have all their qualifying necess- necessities that they need. They will go through and say, okay, this is the amount that we can give you per year, and they will either give them that in a portion or give it them all at once. They will then send us an email letting us know that they qualified for this program. We will mark their account saying that has received, uh, funding, and then we will not go ahead and shut off their, their utilities, the electric utility itself. We feel that this is gonna be the best way to do it instead of having to do all that verification in-house. Now, does that mean that we won't do it in the future? Anything's possible, but right now, because we already use Jacobs Well for this, we feel it's, it's a smooth transition. And for that, what we will do is we'll be paying Jacobs Well fifteen percent, which comes out to be about fifteen thousand dollars for the year based on that hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And any remaining funds will stay there for the future or for the following year. So some of the changes, one of the biggest changes, that's how the operational side of the low income assistance will, will help. One of the things also that the state put together for those utilities that opt out is the ability to disconnect electric customers in the winter months. Currently, we do not do that. Currently, by opting out, we are not able to disconnect any customer's electric without, because of the way that the state law is set up or the state law was set up. We would disconnect water and internet as well, too, because those were not a protected utility during those, that period of time, which is pretty much November first to April fifteenth. By allowing us to disconnect this with electric only, some of the customer classes that, that this would affect, that currently do not have water meters or do not have internet would be anyone outside the city limits that is on a well and does not have our internet service. Anyone that lives in an apartment, that is an all-electric apartment, that does not have an individual water meter, where they have a, a combined water meter for the entire building, which is part of their rent. Any type of multifamily dwelling, uh, a big house that's been charged into a, turned into an apartment building that has a master meter for water, we could not disconnect those customers because it is a master meter for water that would affect all the residents. In addition to that, any type of the trailer parks, as they have the same thing with master water meters as well. So this broadens the amount of customers that we can make sure are paying their bills on time. What we estimated last, or this current April, we did a total of twenty-two disconnects. Fifty percent of those disconnects were electric only, and that was outside of that time period for this. So one of the things that we started looking at the changes to the rules, regs, and rates is how do we make sure that we're not going to freeze somebody? And make sure that we're there. So what we've done is we've revised the rules, rates, and regulations to be able to show that we will not disconnect a resident if the temperature is forecasted to be below thirty-four degrees over twenty-four hour period uh, moving forward. So we're constantly gonna look to make sure that they are not disconnected. However, if that temperature does get below that and they have a water meter or they have internet, we'll be more, we'll disconnect them similar to what we do now. This is just getting those electric-only customers to be able to, to get them to pay their electric bills. Historically, what I have seen is that those that have electric only, knowing that you cannot disconnect, will not try to move forward and pay their bills. They will take two months, three months, and then sometimes skip town, sometime not be able to pay that amount of money that they're, they're due. So what we're hoping with this program is that we are providing them a way to get assistance uh, through our MEAP or the Michigan Energy Assistance Program or Jacobs Well and the money that we've set aside. We also want, want them to know that if they don't or they don't come and contact us, which will work with any customer that wants to come and talk to us, we do have a mechanism in place to be able to disconnect customers during the winter months. And this is what a lot of the utilities that have opted out are doing. They're creating their own plans to be able to disconnect during the winter months. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the program or what we're looking at moving forward. And then, once we get done with that, I'll ask for approval of an ordinance that, uh, Amanda has drafted to change those rules, regulations, and rates.
Hey, Paul? Uh, questions for Paul?
The gas is tied in there. Does that mean that a portion of that money that we're putting aside has also helped to pay that?
Yes. If they are, if they are an electric customer of ours, and, and we've worked it out with the, uh, Michigan Gas Company as well, too, and Jacobs Well, to let them know that this gas assistance is available. The key, the golden ticket, is being a BPU customer, BPU electric customer.
So you have the choice of either charging every ratepayer a dollar twenty-five a month, and then that money goes to Lansing, and then Lansing would administer this? Or you can design your own prog- uh, program, which your estimate last year cost thirty-five to fifty thousand to do it in-house? Is that kinda what I heard you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and, and we, we will continue to, uh, look at this, and if it comes out that it's easier to just let Lansing handle it, we'll be all more and happier to have Lansing handle it. I know some of the utilities that are opting out have actually added a surcharge on their bill to say, it's not me, the state's requiring me to do this, and, and that's what they're doing moving forward.
Well, they're not required. You're, they're quite, you have an option, correct?
Yes, well, they're requiring a dollar twenty-five per meter.
Or do it internally.
Or do it internally.
You have to do one or the other, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and the other thing, too, so that dollar twenty-five, they're going to change that every year up to a maximum of two dollars. And then after that, they'll look at the CPI to be able to increase it that way as well, too. So I don't see this going down at all. Um, I know in the past, when we, we opted in and opted out of this, it was always around the eighty-eight cents, eighty cents, somewhere in there, kind of bounced around that area. But now they, they set a fee of a dollar twenty-five, and they're gonna go all the way up to two dollars in, in the near future.
But if we opt out, all that money stays to our customers?
Yes, yes.
If we opt in, it goes to Lansing, and some of it may come back.
It's, whoever needs it in the state is, is where it'll, it'll go.
Okay, other questions for Paul? Uh, are you gonna handle the ordinance introduction then?
Yes. So what we're asking then is to introduce ordinance number eight seventy-seven, which is the change to the rules, regulations, and rates, which will allow us to disconnect electric meters in the winter months as long as the temperature is above thirty-four degrees over, over the next twenty-four hour period. So we will look at the weather forecast every morning to make that determination if we're able to disconnect or not.
And that's only if they don't have our water?
Correct.
Okay. If they have our water service, then you wouldn't do that regardless of the temperature. You'd shut off the water.
Correct.
Correct, okay. And question on that, uh, they're looking for an introduction of ordinance eight seventy-seven.
Motion to introduce.
Thank you, Travis.
Support.
Thank you, Chad. Okay, any final questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Uh, fifteen, a letter from Keith regarding POAM float shift hours of work.
Thank you, Attorney Counsel. I'm gonna ask Director Sadek come forward just to answer any questions, but this is, I literally the shifting of when the start and end times of a float shift with the police department would, uh, begin and end. And it changes it from, if I can read military time, um, from eight o'clock in the evening to four o'clock in the morning to, um, noon to midnight, correct?
Correct, correct. Not eight, but four, four to four for twelve, twelve. Just quick, real quick history. We went to twelve-hour shifts. Uh, we actually looked at building the four-to-four shift. Part of that coincided with the Sheriff's Department losing their staffing, and we wanted to make sure we had additional staffing for the traditional bar closing and to make sure that our staffing could get through that, that piece. Um, as the Sheriff's Department has came online with, uh, twenty-four-hour patrol and night patrol, our shifts and the call load comes in very busy, normally between noon and eight o'clock. Um, we have a lot of, uh, complaints that come in from their DHS for like, uh, um, they're called lenses. They come in from child abuse type complaints. A lot of the day shift are very heavy, carrying a lot more complaint load. So if we shift the float shift earlier, um, it helps out with that caseload. And now the Sheriff's Department gives us a little more. If we do have, uh, big events after midnight, we'd have more staffing to back our staffing up, and that's really the reason why we, we looked at this.
Questions for Joe?
Yeah, to, to effectuate that, that would require the, the passage of resolution number twenty-five dash a hundred in agreement A twenty-five dash thirty-five.
Motion. Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thanks, John. We have motion, we have support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Joe. Sixteen, a letter from Keith regarding our annual opt-out. Roundhog Day.
Yes, uh, hopefully you recall this on an annual basis. Uh, this is the opportunity we take to opt out of the, the state's Act one fifty-two, uh, requirement, uh, in how we conduct our health insurance, uh, as a per, as an employer. Uh, employers are given options to implement eighty-twenty, uh, employer-employee match programs, uh, hard cap or opt-out. Uh, we seek to opt out every year, uh, one that gives us flexibility with the selection of our employees as to what plans they choose, and also keeps us, uh, gives us the opportu- the greatest opportunity up until recently, uh, to provide HSA contributions, which that's been a, uh, declining opportunity over the last couple of years. Um, just a couple, uh, statistics to suggest that the state did this year because of increases in health insurance costs, increased the hard cap to, by two-point-nine percent, but our insurance costs through the, uh, pool have increased nine-point-one percent. So, uh, we're losing ground every year, uh, but we're still trying to maintain, uh, the best, uh, quality and, uh, uh, cost-effective, uh, health insurance plans as we can for our employees. So with that, we're seeking your approval as the, uh, Coldwater Board of Public Utilities did at its, uh, most recent meeting, uh, to opt out of, at Public Act one fifty-two.
Okay. Done this many, many times, so it's your pleasure.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you. Hmm. Scott, thank you. We have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five ninety-eight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Seventeen, a letter from Robert Hawley regarding the proposed zoning code amendment. Robert?
Good evening. Um, I'll just kinda recap, but, uh, from the first reading, um, this, uh, amendment is to make changes to the Coldwater zoning ordinance to be more flexible for childcare, uh, service providers in the community, uh, making changes to the definitions section, uh, to align with the state requirements, updating the zoning district requirements where they can and can't go, if they have to have a, if they're permitted, whether or not they're special land use. Uh, section four-point-eight, which actually stands, or, uh, excuse me, uh, four-point-eight, which, uh, re- uh, outlines the regulations for the types of providers, uh, group family, uh, and group family, uh, whole, uh, sorry, family, group, and then childcare centers. And in addition, there's adult, uh, daycare facilities that were in that ordinance. Uh, and then, uh, along with the parking, making a little bit more flexible for individuals that have, uh, on-street parking availability, um, where needed. So, uh, this is, uh, the second introduction of ordinance eight seventy-six. Um, if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions? Action?
Vote to approve with this eight seven six.
Thank you, Chad. Michael, support. We have motion and we have support to adopt ordinance eight seventy-six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
On our agenda for public comments, anyone like to address the councils? Seen none, any unfinished business at our level? Any new business at council level? Uh, we do have a request to go into closed session pursuant to section eighty of Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Thompson Construction of nineteen seventy-six to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with Thompson Construction Company versus City of Coldwater. You know, motion and
Motion.
Jim, thank you.
Support.
Thank you Travis. Uh, the roll call vote, when the clerk's ready?
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Canock?
Yes.
Councilmember Houss?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Petzko?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
We'll reconvene after the closed session.
Yeah.
Yeah, back almost back to normal.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Michael. We have a motion to support. Whoever reconvene on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business? We're adjourned.
I almost sat down.
Shoot. Yes, you know.